Welcome to the March 7th, 2024 Regular City Council Meeting. Tonight, we have Reverend Kevin Powell giving the invocation. Welcome.
Thank you and good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Honorable City Council Members, and all of us that are assembled here tonight. I am Kevin Powell, and I am the priest and the pastor at Trinity Episcopal Church here in Muscatine. The Episcopal Church has a long history with the institution of all levels of government here in the United States. In fact, 11 of our presidents were faithful members of the Episcopal Church, ranging from George Washington to George H.W. Bush. Presidents from all faiths have viewed St. John's Episcopal Church near the White House in Washington, D.C. as a quiet place of reflection. Many national memorial services have happened at the Washington National Cathedral, which is an Episcopal church. But here in Muscatine, Trinity was founded in 1839, before the city was even called Muscatine. And our current worship space is one of the oldest in Iowa, being built in 1851. Trinity Church has been a member of this community for 185 years or so and plans on being here for at least another 185 years. So, for the invocation, may we open ourselves up to the higher power that we have. Oh divine, send down upon those who hold office in this city of Muscatine. Send down the spirit of wisdom. Send down the spirit of charity. Send down the spirit of justice. That with steadfast purpose, they may faithfully serve in their office to promote the well-being of all people through your magnificent and holy name. Amen.
Thank you so much. Cindy, please do the roll call.
Councilmember Lampy?
Here.
Councilmember Osborne?
Present.
Councilmember Gordon?
Here.
Councilmember Brockert?
Present.
Councilmember Gingerich?
Present.
Councilmember Lewis?
Present.
Councilmember Conard?
Present.
Seven present, zero absent, Your Honor.
Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're going to go through a couple requests in the mayor's section. Is there... There's a request to appoint Councilmember Matt Conard to the Audit Committee. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved, Louis.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second? Is there any discussion with council? Hear none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries with all ayes. Next item is B, is a request to approve Nora Dwyer to the Library Board of Trustees. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved, Gordon.
We have a motion by Councilmember Gordon.
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Conard. Is there any discussion? Hear none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Next item is C, is a request to appoint the following to the Construction Appeal and Advisory Board contingent on approval on Item 17B. We have Devin Abel with a five-year term, Tim Kelly, five-year term, James Miller, three-year term, and James Noble, four-year term. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved, Louis.
We have a motion by Councilmember Louis and a second by Councilmember Brockert. Is there any discussion?
I just want to thank them for stepping up to this new board. We look forward to a lot of the things that they can help and get us moving forward. So this is a brand-new opportunity. Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Next item is D, is a request to approve the appointment of the following to the Tourism and Hospitality Board. We have Melanie Alexander for a three-year term, Nick Gao, two-year term, and Dustin Joy, one-year term. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Lampy.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Gingerich. Is there any discussion with council? Hear none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Next item is the approval of the agenda. Next is the approval of the agenda. Does the council or administration have any items that you would like to change or pull from the agenda? All right. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved, Gordon.
We have a motion by Councilmember Gordon.
Second, Louis.
And a second by Councilmember Louis. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries with all ayes. Next is communication. Is there anyone present that would like to address an issue that is not on tonight's agenda? And we have four individuals that signed up. Mr. Davis, I'll have you come up first. And state your name, address. We're going to give you three minutes, sir.
My name is David Davis. I live at 1501 Devitt Avenue, Muscatine, Iowa. I'm here again like I was last meeting, meeting, talking about Devitt Avenue. New. I know basically no more than I knew then. Then what I... We are finding out. We are finding out, for lack of a better term, from the streets. Streets were knocking on doors. Doors were talking to people. A lot of it, I was told yesterday, is rumor, and it might be. Be, I don't know. I'm getting nothing from my councilmembers. I have been... I sent everyone an email, and they stopped out. They know our concerns. I think every one of them that stopped out know our concern. But I've received no answers to where we're having issues at. And where we're having issues at is not only the price. 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 But the fact of the location of the sidewalks. And I expressed my fears to several of them and where that was going. Going. It would... Where I think it's going to go is going to eliminate my driveway. It puts me parking back out on the street. While that's not illegal, it's not something I'm looking forward to. I was also told that the sewer project is going in that road, Devitt Avenue, in less than a year. Here. Why would we build a sidewalk to tear it up? Can anyone give me an answer on that? That. I was also told that the sewer project included a sidewalk and was granted a one-cent sales tax to cover all that cost of that sewer project. Is it true? I don't know. No. We're looking for answers. We come to y'all to give us those answers. Answers. If we're not coming to the right place, direct us. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. All right. Next, I have Mr. Eversmeyer. Ben. Ben. The Iowa State one. Welcome.
Thank you for this time to speak. I am Ben Eversmeyer, and I live at 1737 Devitt Avenue. I have lived in this house since 2019. But I've either lived at 1733 Devitt or 1737 Devitt since 1994. I'm here to talk about the sidewalk project on Devitt. My main concern is the cost-sharing part of it. The city code adopted on March 16th of 2023 and updated on February 7th, 2024, says that if there is a new major sidewalk project, the city covers that cost and the property owner maintains it. According to the letter we got, that's not going to be the case. We're going to be on hook for some of the cost. My second concern is cutting out of the yard and the driveways, with the proposed sidewalk making many neighbors unable to use their driveways to park their campers or their nice vehicles in. Making park on the road creates a bigger safety issue for me. If the whole street's lined because it's parked on one side, it makes it worse for the kids or anybody walking, as well as our vehicles getting hit. The school will also not have any place to divert their pickup from the pickup lane if there's residents parking on their side of the street. The other side of the street also parks on our side because it's one side. And if there's no room for cars, where do people park? Can't block a sidewalk. My third concern is the ability for EMS services to go down Devitt. If you put a sidewalk in, people have to park their campers or their vehicles on the road. That street's not wide enough for a fire truck to get down, or they have to wait for somebody that's coming at them to move so that they can get down. I've had EMS come to my house. You guys all know that. Seconds matter. Life or death. My fourth concern is the lack of personal injury accidents involving pedestrians. I contacted the Police Department, or Records Division, and got the reports from 2005 until today. There are zero pedestrian-involved accidents in that time period. The only personal injury accidents on that street are either at intersections like Pinefield and Devitt, Foyum and Devitt. A sidewalk's not going to fix that. Or there's been animals that have ran in the road. Sidewalk's also not going to fix that.
You have 15 seconds.
My fifth concern is the damage to the roads from the concrete trucks and everything else that would be part of this project when we're going to tear it up for the sewer separation, at least on part of it, in the near future. Thank you for your time. I would like everybody that's here from Devitt Avenue that's opposed to the sidewalk, that doesn't want to speak, I would like them to raise their hands.
Thank you, Mr. Eversmeyer. All right. And then we have the other Mr. Eversmeyer. Welcome, sir. Name, address, and we're going to give you three minutes. We have some seats up front if you'd like.
My name is Mark Eversmeyer, and I live at 1733 Devitt Avenue and have for 30 years. My wife Teresa had an appointment tonight or else she'd be with me. We are definitely opposed to the Devitt Avenue sidewalk project as we understand it. And we've got to be... Put it in perspective. There's misinformation. There's conflicting information on timelines, on funding, on just about every aspect of it. So I'm opposed to what I understand about it. For me, you're going to hear from the neighbors, the people who live on Devitt Avenue. People that don't, I'm sure, will weigh in as well. But the... They're going to have dozens of different reasons, but I've boiled mine down to really three. And to echo what everybody else said, cost is certainly a concern. You know, it's a... Even if the homeowner has to pay half or a large percentage of it, it's a working-class neighborhood, and there's a lot of folks that would probably be awfully strapped trying to come up with that kind of cash. Saddling the homeowners with what the cost for something that is questionably an unwanted sidewalk, and it's just a kind of a double negative. Parking is certainly a concern. That neighborhood was settled, or settled, I shouldn't say, developed, if you will, in the 60s, early 60s. One-car garages, one-lane driveways, and houses are close enough together, there's not a lot of room to build other garages. So what we end up with is, you know, everybody parks one in the garage, one on the driveway, or two on the driveway. Like Ben mentioned, there's no parking on the other side of the street. So anybody that's got an excess vehicle or surplus vehicle or kid's car or something like that, they all park on the east side of Devitt. If the sidewalk goes where it's got to go, frankly, I'm going to end up having to park one of my vehicles on the street. I don't relish that thought by any stretch. Or else park across in the sidewalk, and it's, you know, supposed to be a code violation, and I don't think it's encouraged to do so. The safety thing, I mean, on several different levels. Right now, if a... They talk about EMS vehicles, and certainly that's a concern. But it can be a garbage truck and a FedEx truck. They can't both go down Devitt. They can't cross, pass on Devitt. I actually, myself, hit the mirror of a pickup truck with the mirror of my pickup truck one day because I was meeting, and it was a compact car. So it gets pretty narrow when you start parking cars along the road. I'm sure it's probably illegal, two lanes, but you put two large vehicles there, and it's awfully snug. You find yourself slaloming course down the street, in and out, and...
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Oh, okay.
Yep. Appreciate it. No, thank you, Mr. Eversmeyer. All right, Mr. Flores. Name, address, and we're going to give you three minutes, sir.
Hello, my name is Victor Flores. I live on 1530 Devitt Avenue, and I'm against...
Have you spoken to the medic a little bit?
I'm against the project from the hallway because that's going to basically take at least a third from my property, and which I'm not... I agree with because we're going to have to pay for something that basically belongs to the city. That's what I have understand. And anyway, basically, we pay for our property like every year on taxes. So even if it's our property, we still have to pay taxes for it. And like if something happened on the driveway, that's something that we have to cover the cost. And also, like for the wintertime, that they say that vehicles not supposed to be on the street, that's going to be a big issue because then it's going to be like something more for us to clean. And I'm completely against that because most is going to take a lot of my property and at least like two parking lots for my cars. And that's it.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. So now we're going to get to councilmember follow-up. So one thing I want to mention right away is, so next Wednesday, mark your calendars if you so choose. Next Wednesday here at 5:30, we're going to, you know, if you want to come, and there's going to be three councilmembers and myself here. We're going to listen to you guys regarding the Devitt property. So if you want to show up, definitely do so, and we'll be able to... You will be able to discuss kind of the concerns a little bit more so, and we'll definitely take notes for that. So there will be three councilmembers and myself present. Okay? Any follow-up? Yes. Councilmember Osborne.
First, I'd like to thank everyone that's shown up. This is the kind of participation we need on issues especially like this one. And I know David has given me this feedback before, but I'll give this answer again. It's preliminary planning stages, and that's why we don't have a lot of answers. The marks that you've seen in your yards that look like, you know, that everyone's assuming the worst is marks where the... It might go are not where it will go. That's not in the city right-of-way. Can't even do that halfway up your yards. It's just not able to do that. It's got to be in the city right-of-way. You can get on Beacon Magic site, type in your address, and see exactly where the city's right-of-way exists. And roughly speaking, it's going to be about two to three feet of grass and then the sidewalk. The markings are out there for the yellow lines are gas lines, the blue lines are water, I believe. You know, we just can't put a sidewalk over the top of those things, and that's what some of those marks are. The red ones are normally gas. I'm sorry about that. But there are red dots out there, and that's a grid for helping map out the design. I encourage everyone to come Wednesday. Unfortunately, I won't be able to attend Wednesday. I'll be up in Waterloo attending to some issues with my father. And... But my number's available on the webpage. I will commit at this point in time. I'm against the residents paying for what is a city initiative for an important sidewalk in the community. We are listening. We can make changes to the plan, but right now, we don't even have a plan, and that's why there's no answers. What we're doing now is developing a plan. Your questions now are helping develop that plan, and I really appreciate your input. That's all I got.
Thank you. Councilmember Lampy, then we'll do Councilmember Gordon.
Yeah, I'd echo this fact that it's good to see participation from the residents of the neighborhood. I've spoken to several of you throughout the neighborhood and stuff, so your input is valued. It will help us, as Jeff mentioned, it will help us determine, you know, what we can do and how we should do it and what we need to do. I think we have to look at kind of the root cause of why the sidewalk was proposed and make sure that we're addressing those issues. And maybe that root cause doesn't exist today. Who knows in there? So I think Wednesday will be a good informational time for everybody, that we can share what we know. And you can obviously have some additional time to make sure that we understand your concerns and, you know, how you feel about it, whether it's on a plus or a negative side of the sidewalk and stuff. So again, thank you much for showing up, and I hope you come back on Wednesday to chat with us more.
Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you, Mayor. And thanks again, everybody, for coming. And I believe you know that almost everybody up here has been there at least once, if not several times. I think you guys reported, Councilmember Gingerich, for, you know, stalking the neighborhood. I know he was there several days observing.
What was I doing, stalking in the neighborhood?
No, you were observing. So, but we all made the effort to come up and experience what you go through in the slower times and during the pickup. I'm glad to hear that we're having a meeting on Wednesday. I do hope that in addition to the residents and the council, that we include the school board because it's their traffic that tends to be one of the causes to the issue. Now, remember, the sidewalk was tentatively planned because we want to gain walkability in town, and it's been on the sidewalk list for many, many years. Not that it has to be done right now. Okay? I'm one that would hope that we would consider slowing the process down, possibly pausing it until we have proper traffic studies, we have conversations with the school, and we look at alternative places for drop-off because I don't know that Devitt is the best place for the drop-off. But at least there's a conversation next week. And then I would challenge us to make sure that we consider... We constantly have consistent, clear, and concise information out to the residents because this hearsay, well, I've heard it's going to cost $5,000 to $10,000 for the sidewalk, we don't know. Again, that's why we need the surveys and the engineering. Or how much is it going to consume of my, you know, grass? Like Councilman Osborne said, I mean, those stakes are not the true stakes. So... But we need to make sure that what we tell you is consistent, concise, easy to understand, so we get rid of all this hearsay. So I would challenge us as staff and everything to make sure we do that. But I'm going to be watching. I don't know if I'll be at the meeting on Wednesday, but I'm not above saying pause it. So that's just my thought.
Councilmember Brockert.
Thank you all for coming. It's good to see that you all are interested enough in what goes on in your neighborhood to come up and talk to us. There was a new sidewalk put in in my neighborhood, as you know, a couple of years ago. Our residents were not charged a dime. I'm inalterably opposed to asking residents to pay for new construction sidewalk. No uncertain terms. If it's repair, maybe, but not for new construction.
Councilmember Lewis.
I too want to say thank you for everybody coming. I know I've talked to several of you on the phone, or you've stopped me as I've been at Walmart or wherever else, and that I appreciate. And please keep doing that. Our goal is to remember is that as council, we serve you. You are our boss. And so the more we hear from you and what you want us to do or would like to see us do, we're taking our direction from you. Don't remember, it's not the other way around. And so for that, I just want to say thank you to all of you for coming out, and I will be there next Wednesday and hope that we have some input so we can have basically a conversation about what's going on, where it's like you're not limited to just three minutes. So thank you again, guys.
Councilmember Gingerich.
As Councilwoman Gordon reported, I have been in the neighborhood six times in the last two weeks. I've observed dismissal. I stayed in my truck and didn't cause any problems except for one incident where I got out and talked to a gentleman sitting on his porch having a cigarette. And I think it's, you know, for me to say how I feel about this sidewalk issue, I need to make sure I hear all the information. And I think a lot of good things will... Very informative items will come out from, hopefully, the meeting Wednesday. And I will certainly make an informed vote, and I'll certainly be satisfied with whatever kind of vote I make. But I need to hear a lot more information yet, too, some things, so... Thanks for coming in, as you've, you know, told us. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Any other comments?
Mayor, just one follow-up. We can only have three people at that meeting. It's not that we would all want to be there if we could, and Jeff would definitely be there. But because open law and all that consideration, we can only have three. So don't think that...
So three councilmembers and the mayor. So I don't count as... I don't count.
So I just wanted to bring that up because that's... We all do care as we've been out there, but...
All right. Yeah, thank you, everybody, for coming. Appreciate it. Next item is Consent Agenda. The following items are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a councilmember so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda, which includes Items 10A through E, Items 11A through D, Items 12A through C, Items 13A through C, and then Item 14 with bills totaling $6,998,665.92?
So moved, Gordon.
We have a motion by Councilmember Gordon.
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Brockert. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries with all ayes. Thanks, John. Thank you. All right. Now we're going to go into public hearing. First is 15A, is a public hearing regarding plans, specifications, form of contract, and cost estimate setting a bid date for the airport lighting project. Now is the time for the public to comment. Hear none, I will take a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
And a motion by Councilmember Lampy and a second by Councilmember Gingerich. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries with all ayes. Next item is 15B, Public Hearing Regarding the Plans, Specifications, Form of Contract, and the Cost Estimate and Setting a Bid Date for the West Hill Sewer Separation Phase 6C Project. Now is the time for the public to comment. Hear none, I will take a motion to close public hearing.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Gordon and a second by Councilmember Louis. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries with all ayes. Next item is C, is a public hearing regarding an ordinance amending Title II, Chapter 13, Section 3, Subsection C of City Code, Construction Appeal and Advisory Board Appointment. Now is the time for the public to comment. Hear none, I will take a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved, Louis.
We have a motion by Councilmember Louis.
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Osborne. I heard you first, Councilmember Osborne.
He's closer.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries with all ayes. Next item is D, is a public hearing regarding instituting proceedings and taking action on a proposal to enter into a loan agreement and to borrow money thereunder in a principal amount not to exceed $3.2 million for the purpose of paying the cost to that extent of undertaking Lagoon Bank stabilization improvements, undertaking improvements to and acquiring equipment for the municipal airport, acquiring a fire truck, acquiring an ambulance, undertaking nuisance abatement and demolition projects for dangerous and dilapidated properties, and constructing and equipping the replacement training facilities for the municipal police department resulting from disaster damage to existing facilities. Now is the time for the public to comment. Yes. Mr. Kaufman, I'm going to have you approach the podium. Name and address, please.
I have several... My name is Max Kaufman, 1609...
I have several. My name is Max Kaufman, 1609 Foster Street, Muscatine, Iowa. I have several questions about this loan. And they kind of intertwine. 3.2 mil, what's the interest rate on that loan? What's the extended time of that loan? So what is the ultimate overpay above and beyond 3.2 million? How in the world did our city get so bankrupt that we've got to borrow 3.2 million? I don't understand that. We spend money like a loose goose every every council meeting, we just throw money out and throw money out. And now we're turning around wanting to borrow 3.2 million for buying a fire truck and an ambulance. In the last year, we've given away a fire truck and an ambulance, maybe the last 18 months. If we need to borrow money to buy more, we shouldn't be giving away what we've got if we've got to borrow money to replace them. I'm only been in business a few years because I'm just a young man. But I know how to do business. And this is, in my opinion, not a real good way. But then, like I said, I'm just a young man. I don't know that much about it. Perhaps you guys can explain it to me.
Thank you, Mr. Kaufman. Is there anyone else that would like to comment on this subject? All right. Here or none, I will take a motion to close public hearing.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Osborne.
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Conard. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries with all ayes. Next item is E, is a public hearing regarding instituting proceedings and taking action on a proposal to enter into loan agreement and to borrow money thereunder in a principal amount not to exceed $500,000 for the purpose of paying the cost to the extent of installing fuel tank and pump replacements for the municipal Public Works Department. Now is the time for the public to comment.
Reiterate what I just said, please.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? All right, here or none, I will take a motion to close public hearing.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Osborne.
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Gordon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Bless you. Next item is F, is a public hearing regarding instituting proceedings and taking action on a proposal to enter into a loan agreement to borrow money thereunder in a principal amount not to exceed $700,000 for the purpose of paying the cost to that extent of constructing, furnishing, and equipping the indoor sports dome of municipal parks and recreation facilities. Now is the time for the public to comment. Same?
Reiterate.
Thank you. Any anybody else from the public? Here or none, I will take a motion to close public hearing.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Osborne.
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Lampy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries with all ayes. Next item is G, is a public hearing regarding instituting proceedings and taking action on a proposal to enter into a loan agreement and to borrow money thereunder in a principal amount not to exceed $700,000 for the purpose of paying the cost to that extent of undertaking irrigation improvements to the sports field complex of municipal parks and recreational facility, constructing repairs and improvements to municipal buildings, including roofing, windows, and doors, and constructing a vehicle wash bay for the municipal Public Works Department. Now is the time for the public to comment.
This time.
I'll have you approach.
To reiterate, I'd like a response. Thank you.
You bet. Anybody else from the public? Here or none, I will take a motion to close public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
So okay, so we have a motion by Councilmember Osborne and a second by Councilmember Lewis. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Now we are to 17A. The third and final reading of an ordinance amending Title VII, Chapter 2, Section 6 of City Code regarding the use of UTVs on city streets. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance on third and final reading and to direct for its publication as required by law?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Gindrich.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Conard. Is there any discussion with the council? Here or none, Councilmember Gindrich, how do you vote?
Aye.
Brockert.
Aye.
Conard.
Aye.
Louis.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
And Lampy.
Aye.
Third and final reading of this ordinance is approved as submitted with all ayes. Next item is B, is request to waive second and third reading and adopt for its first reading on adopt on its first reading, an ordinance amending Title II, Chapter 13, Section 3, subsection C of City Code, Construction and Appeal and Advisory Board Appointment, allowing one county resident to serve on the board.
So moved, Louis.
Is there a motion to waive the second and third re- you're fine. Second and third reading and adopt this ordinance on first and final reading and to direct for its publication as required by law?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Lewis.
Say it.
And a second by Councilmember Osborne. Is there any discussion with council?
Yes, sir.
I'd just like to highlight, it's fairly rare to waive the second and third reading. However, in this case, it's it's a new board, and this is really an oversight in our original code that we adopted to allow at least one member on the zoning commission board that, you know, the permits and everything we we and and the contractors from outside of the city that come in from the county to we, you know, they really need some representation on this board. So makes a lot of sense to waive the second, third reading. We haven't really had much input from the public on this one.
Any other comments, council? Here or none, Councilmember Gindrich, how do you vote?
Aye.
Brockert.
Aye.
Conard.
Aye.
Louis.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
And Lampy.
Aye.
First reading of ordinance approved, estimated with all ayes. Next item is C, is a first reading of an ordinance amending Title III, Chapter 1, Section 2, subsection D of City Code, Sidewalk Installation and Repair, Right-of-Way Maintenance, Duty of Owner to Repair and Maintain. Is there a motion to approve the first reading of this ordinance as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Gindrich.
Second, Louis.
Second by Councilmember Lewis. Is there any discussion with the public? Council? Here or none, Councilmember Gindrich, how do you vote?
Aye.
Brockert.
Aye.
Conard.
Aye.
Louis.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Conard.
Aye.
Brockert.
Aye.
And Gindrich.
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next item is a resolution approving plans and specifications and setting bid date for the West Hill Sanitary and Sewer Separation Project Phase 6. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Brockert.
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Osborne. Is there any discussion with council? Here or none, Councilmember Gindrich, how do you vote?
Aye.
Brockert.
Aye.
Conard.
Aye.
Louis.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
And Lampy.
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next item is F, is a resolution authorizing combining loan agreements approving the future issuance of general obligation corporate purpose bonds and providing for the levy taxes to pay the same, and this is public hearings, D, E, F, and G. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved, Gordon.
We have a motion by Councilmember Gordon.
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Conard. Is there any discussion with council?
Mayor, I've got a comment.
Yes.
This item concerning our tax levy, kind of tied in my preliminary thought on the budget is as well here. I hope indulge me, but I think our city administrator, finance director, department directors, they all work really hard on presenting to us a budget that is almost balanced. And then the council goes through a lot of discussion and back and forth and so forth, and with cooperation from all the appropriate entities, and we come up with a balanced budget, which is great. City staff's done a lot of great work, and the council's had a lot of great discussion and so forth, too. I think there's work to be done yet. I think there's some things that we're spending money on that we don't need to. And hopefully, I'll have a chance to, you know, make mention of those things. I've made mention of some items in some private conversations if I have I've had meetings with Carol and so forth. So I think the main point I want to make to the to the city is that it's really a good problem solving effort that I'm fortunate to be part of in coming to terms, I don't know, coming to terms, that might be kind of strong, but coming to a decision on on taxpayers' budget. So thank you, Mayor.
Any other comments? Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to come back to D, E, F, and G specific. And I just want to respond to Mr. Kaufman because he had some specific request for some information. Not that we can give it to you tonight, Mr. Kaufman, but I think I'd like to see us in a few weeks, come back and at least give him some numbers. The bonding, or as it reads here, the loan, the bonding is a great tool in our tool belt to use for bigger projects and to see things done. But you did ask for a couple pieces of information. So I'd like to see us at least try to gather that and come back in a few weeks with some answers for Max. So he's got that information.
See, probably could answer a couple of those. We don't know the interest rate yet until we actually sell the bonds. So that's one thing I'd mention, but I don't yeah, go ahead.
Yes, we, as part of the budget review sessions, we did go through each of the projects on the in the bond issue. And without going through, I think there's probably 10 or more, each of them, quite a few do have grant funding for part of the costs. And then the part of the bond issue is the local match. So there's a number of those. There are some that don't have a local match. But like the Weed Park Lagoon dredging, that's been identified as an issue for quite a number of years. The vehicle wash bay is, there's two different transit grants that are paying some of that. The Public Works Fuel Tanks, there's no grants, but that's been cited as by inspectors as needing to be replaced. So it's addressing quite a few needs of the city. We were able to structure the debt service, the bonds for these, so we don't have an increase in the in the debt service tax rate. So our financial consultant works with us and blends the new issues in with the old issues. Interest rates are a little higher now. They've allowed for 5%, but we do take bids on the bonds. So that'll be in in April. And so there'll be usually, we have at least five different companies that submit bids for the bonds. And generally, we've got a pretty good bond rating. And that bond rating helps us keep those good interest rates.
Councilmember Osborne has a question.
I have a couple of questions that Max brought up. Are we bankrupt?
Did I did I not explain that during the budget session? We are not bankrupt.
During budget, yes.
So we're not bankrupt. And and you bring up the bond rating, which is very high, which would indicate a good measure of not being bankrupt. Typically, the city will retire loans at about the same rate we take on new loans. I think we've, you know, I haven't I've been I haven't been to as many council meetings as Max has been, but I kind of probably met you in the last eight years or so anyway. Prior to that, you certainly will hear more. But I've noticed that the city typically buy, you know, takes out these loans or bonds to buy fire trucks and ambulances all the time. We retire assets like that with nearly 300,000 miles on them all the time. But would you say there's ever been a point in time in, I mean, at least in your tenure, where we haven't had a loan at some point in time, or we haven't?
There, we've always had bond issues since before I started.
It's a pretty common tool that cities use all the time, right?
Yes.
And businesses typically have loans as well. If we've all got mortgages on our houses and we're not bankrupt. So I hope that answers some of your questions, Max.
Any other questions?
No, I think Councilman Osborne brought up some things. I mean, the bond that we traditionally do about every other year.
Yes.
Is a tool to keep us viable and to pay for the bigger expenses. So and bigger projects that we may not have been able to afford. So and we use a great bonding agent, a trusted advisor. So thank you and thank you, Jeff, for specifying that.
Any other comments?
Well, if Chief Evers doesn't mind, Carol, if it's okay, can we answer the question about the fire trucks? I mean, I thought we had that very well taken care of during the council meetings before. And that's a, I'm sorry, but you know, that's I think that's a there'll be a direct answer to that question. Okay.
Yes. Our fleet replacement schedule that we have goes out over 50 years. So we can tell you exactly when we're going to need to replace one just on the fleet replacements schedule. The engine was over 30 years old. And so when you go back to trying to plan out vehicles, I mean, I myself, I wouldn't even drive a 30-year-old vehicle across the United States. Part of our mission is to provide effective municipal services. And so we need to make sure that, number one, the vehicle's going to start, the brakes are going to work when we're going lights and sirens and we hit the brakes. So we need to have a reliable fire apparatus. We maintain them for 30 years before we replace them. It was working, and it was at its end of life at 30 years, and that's why we replaced it. And so now we're good for another 30 years. Same thing with the ambulances. Those are run lights and sirens every day, 15, 16 emergencies a day. Same thing with reliability. We need to make sure that they start. We need to make sure that the brakes work, that we can get there, we can treat the patient, we can get him to the hospital. Those life expectancies for those ambulances are around six to eight years. They do rotate in and out from in-town usage and out-of-town usage, going to the Quad Cities and Iowa City. And those usually will have 200,000 to 300,000 miles on them when they are replaced. So I hope that answers your questions.
Well, but the
Councilmember Osborne.
The ambulances that we gave away.
Yes.
Were worth how much?
The trade-in was, I think, less than 1,500. I'd have to look at the memo, but I wanted to say the trade-in was a couple hundred dollars to maybe 1,500. There's just no value in them.
Yeah, I remember like 1,200 bucks, too.
Yeah.
And so forth. So anyway.
Councilmember Osborne.
John covered it.
Perfect. All right. Thank you, Chief.
Thanks.
Councilmember Gindrich, how do you vote?
Aye.
Brockert.
Aye.
Conard.
Aye.
Louis.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
And Lampy.
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next item is G, is a resolution setting a public hearing on March 21st at 2024 at 6:00 PM regarding a building encroachment easement. This is at John Duncan Park, which is the American Legion area as well. Is there a Is there any discussion with the public? Or council?
Yeah, I think, I'd like to comment again here. I'll try to, but you know, the American Legion approached myself and community development members and wanted, you know, very assertively to come to some conclusion on this project. And I, I know that in visiting with them, I, I got involved with it. It doesn't matter how, but in visiting with the Commander Driscoll, he was really complimentary and of the, the direction and the service and so forth that he got from Andrew, Jody, April, and all the people involved in getting that transferred, you know, to the American Legion and getting this situation cleared up and over with that, you know, and it's a situation they've had on their mind for like four or five years on how to get this resolved. And it got resolved really well, I think, Carol, didn't it? Yep. So I wish Commander Driscoll was here. He's kind of a talkative guy and he could probably done a lot better job than what I just did. So, good guy.
Any other comments, council? Here are none. Councilmember Lampy, how do you vote?
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Connerd.
Aye.
Brockert.
Aye.
And Gindrich.
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next is H is a resolution amending city code appendix D schedule of building-related permit fees and other requirements by adding a fee for the reinspection of previous, previously inaccessible areas. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Gindrich and a second by Councilmember Gordon. Is there any discussion with the public? Or council?
I have a question.
You betcha.
Okay. So our, our inspection staff goes back and inspects the area that couldn't be gotten into and the, after seven to 10 days. And then another go-around happens in seven to 10 days. When they, when they went back in seven to 10 days, there's areas of the building, the rental property, that can't be gotten into again. So how does this play out if there, if there's three or four of these seven to 10-day periods? You're going to keep issuing the fines? What's, I don't think this, the item spoke to that question, but, you know.
Mayor, council, so I think, I wouldn't anticipate that to be a, a common situation. Were that to be continually the case, I think first, second, or third time, it'd be the additional fees. If they're still in cooperative after that, essentially, we have some other tools available to us. Revoking the rental license, which can lead to citation of the landlord or posting the building for non-occupancy. I mean, so, I mean, those are kind of the nuclear options, but did that answer?
Yeah, thank you. Any other questions? Councilmember Osborne.
I've got a little concern if I'm reading this correctly. Because current code says there's no fee on the first reinspection, second, there is, third, there is. But then we're adding one on inspection of a previously inaccessible area. So that would be potentially in this scenario, if I think through this. The first inspection had an inaccessible area. And so then we're going to come back a second time and that's what the fee applies.
What we're looking at here is essentially a supplemental inspection. You'd still have the, the one freebie. The way we've been doing it now is kind of inefficient. We would come back after the 60 days and hope that you're, the entire thing's accessible. Then for the area that wasn't, you get another 60 days on that. So what this is trying, what, what this approach would do is if, say, you couldn't get into a room, that we'd come back seven days, you know, seven to 10 days later, inspect that, add that to the original findings. Then give that, you know, that report to landlord, then there'd be that 60 days.
How solid are we? So if I was a landlord, you come to inspect me, I've got an area that's inaccessible. My bad, I understand. But you're going to come back and re-inspect. How solid are we on, I know how long that's going to be and when you're going to come back? Because I don't want to surprise anybody that we came back a second time and now you get a B.
Right, so as with any inspection, there has to be advance notice to the property owner and the tenant. The direction to the staff would be essentially schedule this in, in the field and send a written notice as well.
Okay, can we be clear on that notice that we are coming back?
Correct.
For a previously inaccessible area? And that needs to be clear so that we have access next?
Yep.
Okay. As long as we're clear about that, I would be okay with this.
Any other comments? Thank you, Andrew. Councilmember Gindrich, how do you vote?
Aye.
Brockert.
Aye.
Connerd.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
And Lampy.
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next item is resolution awarding a contract for the Grandview Avenue sidewalk extension project for higher construction, Inc. in the amount of $166,859.50. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved, Osborne.
Motion by Councilmember Osborne.
Second, Gordon.
Second by Councilmember Gordon. Is there any discussion with the public or council? Here are none. Councilmember Gindrich, how do you vote?
Aye.
Brockert.
Aye.
Connerd.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
And Lampy.
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next item is J is resolution supporting submission of a request to the Office of the Honorable Congresswoman Miller Meeks for $2,923,549 in the congressional-directed spending funds for the redundant force main project. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Gordon and then a second by Councilmember Brockert. Is there any discussion with the public or council? Margaret, I'd like to thank you for your work, for doing this submission and working on the grant. So thank you for your hard work, appreciate it. Councilmember Gindrich, how do you vote?
Aye.
Brockert.
Aye.
Connerd.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
And Lampy.
Aye.
Resolution adopted with all ayes. Next item is K is a resolution setting a public hearing for April 4th of 2024 at 5:30 PM in city council chambers on the property tax levy for the fiscal year '24, '25 budget and taxpayer statements. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Lewis. You're fine.
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Lampy. Is there any discussion with the public or council? And again, it's 5:30 PM. Councilmember Gindrich, how do you vote?
Aye.
Brockert.
Aye.
Connerd.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
And Lampy.
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next item is L is request to approve a cost-sharing agreement with Kent Shared Services LLC in the amount of $42,954.26 for the joint execution of improvements to the McKee Button Factory Storm Sewer Connection onto Green Street. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved, Lewis.
We have a motion by Councilmember Lewis.
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Osborne. Is there any discussion with council?
I do have a question, Your Honor.
You bet.
When Merge finally starts their construction, how is that going to be handled with their sewer connections?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This will be placed in the easement. It is actually south of where Merge is proposing to build. So we did work with them when we, when we laid this out so that it won't be in their way.
Okay, but are we going to have to go back and do another cut, if you will, to put in the sewer for Merge?
No, no, this is Storm Sewer that they'll tie, they'll be able to tie into.
Okay.
Yeah, it won't, it won't come across the street anymore.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other questions? Here are none. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Next item is M, request to approve a professional services agreement with Stanley Consultants in the amount of $11,775 for design services for the installation of odor control equipment at the Water Resource Recovery Facility. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Brockert.
Second, Lewis.
We have a second by Councilmember Lewis. Is there any discussion with council?
Sooner than later, please.
Re, okay, all in favor, sorry. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Request is approved with all ayes. All right. Request to approve the issuance of a purchase order in the amount of $377,372 to Hoagland Bus Company, Inc. for the two light-duty buses. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Gordon and a second by Councilmember Lampy. Is there any discussion with council?
Your Honor.
Yes.
We should probably point out that part of this is being covered by grants.
All right.
But I don't remember how much. 80%? Okay, thanks.
Any other comments, questions, council? Here are none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Next item is O is request to approve the issuance of a purchase order to Stivers Ford in the amount of $180,000 for the purchase of three 2024 Ford Interceptor police vehicles. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Connerd.
Second, Lewis.
Second by Councilmember Lewis. Is there any discussion with council?
I just want to thank the police department for, I know we were having some issues getting the vehicles that they wanted and a willingness to find alternatives. And so I just want to thank them for their due diligence. Also want to make sure that people that are out there listening, that it sounds like we're just aye, aye, aye in all of this and that there's been, this is last year's budget and we're just now going through the process of approving to let that money go to those areas. So I know sometimes as we're watching this, I know I used to, as I was sitting out there, felt like council was just saying, yes, I agree, yes, I agree, and, and not really having a conversation. A lot of it is because all the conversations have happened already. So just so the public's aware.
Well said, Councilmember Lewis. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Here are none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Next item is P is request to approve the issuance of a purchase order in the amount of $94,997 to Henderson Products for the purchase of a dump body, hydraulic hoist, and front snowplow. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved, Gordon.
We have a motion by Councilmember Gordon and a second by Councilmember Brockert. Is there any discussion with council?
I do have a question for Brian. How old is the unit that we're replacing, Brian? And what's its condition?
You stumped me, Nadine. It's, I, I want to say it's a 20, it's a 2000-ish. So it's at least 20 years old and the condition is, it needs to go away. It's, it's rusted out. It's, it's a shallow is what it used to be. So that's what we're replacing with. So you're already, you approved the purchase of the, of the cabin chassis at a previous meeting. This is the snow package, if you will, that goes on, so it's the bed, the plow, and everything else that goes with that. So, yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Here are none. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Next item is Q is request to approve the issuance of a purchase order to J.L. Brady Company in the amount of $53,990 for the purchase of two mechanical air units for the Water and Resource Recovery Facility grit building. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved, Gordon.
We have a motion by Councilmember Gordon.
Second, Lewis.
And a second by Councilmember Lewis. Is there any discussion with council? Here are none. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Next item is R is a request to approve the bargaining agreement between the City of Muscatine, Teamsters, and Helpers Local 238 covering the police bargaining unit. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved, Lewis.
We have a motion by Councilmember Lewis.
Second, Osborne.
And a second by Councilmember Osborne. Is there any discussion with council? Councilmember Gordon.
Just, I guess I want to thank everybody involved in the contract with getting it done and signing off our HR director, the bargaining units, the PD, our counsel. So thank you for getting this done to everybody's satisfaction.
Any other comments, questions, concerns? All right. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Next is S is request to approve the issuance of a purchase order to Rydell Roofing, Inc. in the amount of $80,510 for emergency roof replacement at the Water and Resource Recovery Facility diffused air flotation building. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved, Gordon.
We have a motion by Councilmember Gordon.
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Lampy. Is there any discussion with council?
Mayor, I have a question quick. I just throw this out. Would, would an asset management program have prevented this from having to have been done? I guess, Mr. Cook, thanks for coming up.
Yeah, sure, Mayor, Council. We do have a plan for that. And we had three companies come and look at all of our buildings and all of our roofs. And we even had one repair some of the places that we had. When we repaired them, it moved leaks to places that were very dangerous to our staff. So the leaks now started moving over electrical MCCs and things of that nature, which, you know, it, it's going to move us a lot faster when we say it's doing that. You know, roofs leak, little drips here and there in certain places you're not too worried about. So we were going to budget for that to be replaced in the next budget. But once we found three-foot rips and tears and things like that in places that were now encroaching on equipment and, and high-power electrical equipment, we said we just need to get that replaced now before somebody gets hurt.
But did you utilize an asset management program to know that the roof was leaking?
Uh, no, we just saw leaks. I mean, we, we could, we could, we could see leaks.
And once again, you know, I'm acting, I'm trying to, it seems like I'm trying to catch things. But I am not in favor of spending any money on an asset management program when we have directors up and down our city government that are supposed to be watching the buildings, paying attention to things that are going on and.
Yeah, we, that's why we were getting.
Comment at a point that I need to make. So I appreciate that, John, thank you.
Yep.
What are the ages of the current roof? I'm sorry, John. Current roof's age?
Uh, the one roof we had was actually less than 10 years old. It was put on by a company that's now defunct. So we can't get any warranty or anything out of it. Can't get anybody to come back. It was done very poorly. They were the low bid. Unfortunately, we often take low bids and we should make that a cautionary tale, that we shouldn't always do that. The other one is probably over 30 years old. Yeah. So they were, they were ready for, they were due for repair, for replacement, sorry.
Councilmember Osborne.
Just a comment on the idea of waiting till leaks happen. That damages equipment. Having an asset management system that's effective will help avoid damage to equipment from leaky roofs. It will not detect a roof that was ripped by a storm or poor installations and all those kinds of things. But it does help with managing your assets, knowing when to replace it before the leak happens.
What type of roof is it, by the way?
They're a membrane, a rubber membrane roof.
Rubber membrane?
Yeah.
Any other comments, questions? Here are none. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Thank you, John. Last item is request to approve the issuance of a purchase order to Rydell Roofing in the amount of $30,101 for the emergency roof replacement to the Water and Resource Recovery Facility Digestor Control Building. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Brockert.
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Gordon. Is there any discussion with council? Here are none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Request is approved with all ayes. And next is item eighteen A, and this is a request by Councilmember Gendrich to discuss the sale of the city-owned Brook Street Lots parcel numbers zero eight three six one eight four zero three zero and eight, zero eight three six one eight four zero three one. Councilmember Gendrich, you have the floor.
Thank you, mayor. Yeah, I just want to ask council to consider the importance of that green space to that neighborhood. I think we should maintain that green space. Kids play there, it's an attractive part of the neighborhood. It's, the property is of really no significant value. It's, I think, appraised at like thirty-six hundred bucks for those lots, something like that. Heavily-used area by kids. And, you know, in many ways, or, you know, the city lawnmower pulls up to Brook Street Park, they cross the street and they go mow that green space. Very little expense involved in maintaining an open green space for the kids to play in and take advantage of. And for us to feel like that's an important part of our, you know, goal to get rid of city property that we're not getting any good out of and that type of thing, I, I, I think, you know, the return for the quality of life in that neighborhood for some of those kids and so forth is, goes beyond someone trying to develop that area. I know there's some questions with, you know, what to do about fringe properties and access and easements and things like that. And those things need to get worked out. But I'm asking the council to consider taking that property off the, you know, the bid process that it's going through now and maintain it for the neighborhood to use, so.
And we're not going to be doing any kind of voting tonight at all, correct? We're just going to be?
You could, I think, because since it's on the agenda, but I think if you, council would formally decide on this to approve the sale. I mean, that's kind of the vote on this, but if council doesn't desire to sell it, we'll pull it off the website. So it just heads off a future vote.
Okay. Any other comments? Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Osborn.
I would be in favor of continuing the process. I think the right time to vote on this is when we have bids or don't have bids. How can we make statements on what it's worth until we let the process tell us what it's worth with our bid process? It is a very important goal of the city to get rid of these properties. They are not good use of taxpayer money in general. Not stinking specifically on these two units, but in general, we've, we've put this out as an important part of getting viable properties back on tax records and as a way to grow the city. We just spent, was it fifty thousand dollars on a housing study that told us a lot of, our focus should be on infills? And I could think of these two properties as being what was deeply talked about in what we learned in that study to, to develop these infill properties and get them back on the tax records, get them productive again.
Andrew, I have a question for you, if that's all right. So, two questions. Number one would be, this lot specifically, just for everyone to hear, is it a developable area with the water runoff and things like that? And then I have a second question after that.
Could it be developed? Yeah, I would consider a developable lot, it's of legal size. There's utilities there. When you build, you know, stormwater would have to be appropriately managed, but I'd consider it a developable lot, yes.
Okay. And I guess my next question is, for some of these lots, I think it, my opinion, it'd be great to kind of do an assessment of these properties, you know, properties that are on the surplus. Is it, could it be developable or is it really not developable at all? Just to kind of give us your professional opinion or Kevin's or, you know, whoever's looking at it. I think it'd be kind of nice to have that in the future, depending on what properties, if that sounds appropriate, but.
Yeah, we can do that. That's, that's a code, and actually it's in the code that we can do that, so.
Okay.
For those that aren't developable, the code says that we can sell them for a unit price to adjoining property owners.
Councilmember Gordon and Councilmember Connor.
I'm glad you're up there, Andrew. I just want to sort of ask you a question again. I'm in favor of leaving, like Councilman Osborne said, I just want to finish the process and see if anybody moves forward and comes forward with a bid. And if they do, don't they have to have sort of a development plan that's suitable for that site? It's not like we're going to sell it to someone and they don't have a plan. They have to bid and then have a plan, correct?
Yeah, that's correct. So when, if there is a bid, if their proposed price and their proposed plan would come to you to then act upon as council.
So there isn't just a sale at this point. I mean, they need to have an idea of what they want to do with that land and knowing that it does have some drainage issues. They're definitely, you know, they've got to take that into consideration with their plan. I just don't want to set a precedence that we put this property out there now. We've heard from public, everybody's going to want green space. And this is just going to put other properties at risk if we pull it, if we don't see it go through the process. Now, if there's no bid, we'll talk about it again then afterwards, so.
Councilmember Connor.
I just think in a past conversations, was it, was it a landfill at one point or was that property a landfill? Does the city have data back on that?
I have heard that over the years. I've looked for any documenta, I have not found any documentation to that, but I can't definitively say one way or another. If someone were to develop that, that would be part of the due diligence that they would need to do.
Okay. But that wouldn't come back on the city selling property, there's obviously no documentation, so just thinking of any issues for the city if they were to sell that property and it wasn't landfill, but it sounds like we don't know it is.
Councilmember Brockert, then Councilmember Louis, and Councilmember Osborn.
I've lived in a house with a wet basement. It was due to groundwater because the river was up in ninety-three. That's no fun. You get mold, mildew, and everything else in there. And to me, I wouldn't touch that property with a ten-foot pole if it was being offered to me as a developable property. If there is some other way we can solve this so that neighbors are happy, the city's happy, and everybody walks away with a win, I'd be for that, but I am not for selling it as a developable lot.
Councilmember Louis.
I'm very concerned from what I've heard of the, the land being mushy, the drainage issues. And an issue for me, it's like, okay, so they build a house and then all of a sudden we have a pond that's back there. And I just think of things that we've had happen before where it's been like, okay, now we've got mosquitoes, we've got a wet spot, now we've got frogs and all of those things. I would like to see us look to, we've had some thoughts and it's just like, you know, if that area would like that to be a green space, John, would those people be willing to buy that green space?
Well, you know, I don't know.
And then it would be their property and they would be, they would be then responsible for cleaning.
My direction, or not direction, but my concern is to get it off of the sale list and then meet and discuss what those neighbors want to do. But, you know, it's currently on the silent bid list. That auction closes March, what?
Nineteenth.
Pardon me?
Nineteenth.
March nineteenth. It should be dropped from the list and we should develop that lot and so forth with the cooperation with, you know, neighbors, what they want to do to maintain that green space, direction of the city, whatever. It's the cheapest green space in town for kids in that neighborhood of any property that we mow. It's the cheapest green space in town for us to mow and maintain. The mower pulls up to do Brook Street Park, they drive across the street, they run around that green space, everybody's happy. The kids have a place and all that. So to me, we need to get it off the roster to be silent auctioned and then deal with the property, so.
Councilmember Osborn, then Councilmember Lampy.
The plan, the bid, I want to explore what Angie said a little farther. The bid does have in it that the, they need to propose a plan on what they're going to do with the property and that would be reviewed for drainage issues and everything that we're aware of, right?
A plan for the property is required, drainage issues. So these are no different than any other parcel in town. When you build in town, you have to solve and manage the drainage issues. The technical, the technicalities, how you would do that, I wouldn't anticipate that to be in their plan. That would be, you know, that requires some design, but that would, if someone then goes to build there, that's part of it.
Yeah, they're obviously not going to put a lot of money into something and not win the bid. But they will need to mention things, this is what we plan to do, this is what it's going to take to do it and all that. And then that plan would come before council as a recommendation and we would all see exactly what the bid was for, what it was for, what they did, what they're proposing to mitigate some of the issues that are raised by residents. And now that we've had a lot of feedback, we'll get that. And finally, I just want to say one thing a little off of this. We had a lot of recommendations that came through on properties just like this out of that housing study. Different incentives that we can do and, and one that Don and I talked about and others have too about marketing these through realtors and all that kind of stuff. So should we not get a bid? First of all, again, I want to reiterate, we should let the process work out. If we vote against it after we have our proposal, so be it. But I would also say that, you know, we should take some of the recommendations that we paid for and implement them and get more aggressive on selling properties like these if we don't get a bid.
Councilmember Lampy.
Yeah, I think, again, not only the, the plan that has to be submitted not only has to have a plan, but it has to have a timeline on it as well, if I remember the process right, is that correct, Carol? They both have to have a plan and a timeline that says you have to commence with improvements to the property within a certain set period of time?
We do have bid postings that way. I'm actually looking at this bid posting right now to verify the timeline.
Yeah, because again, I would encourage, just for the fact that we don't have, you know, someone that buys the property and then it sets unmaintained either by the city or the new property owner, unmaintained for a period of time or we've got to go out and maintain it and then from a city standpoint, maintain it and try and go through all that process to charge them back. So I would encourage just to make sure, and again, this should all come forward when the bid is submitted. It should come with a plan, it should come with a timeline on that. I think as was stated earlier, there is a park directly across from this that if the neighborhood says, hey, I want green space, I think every neighborhood would gladly raise their hand and say, I want a big green space in my area that the city pays for and city maintains. I think every neighborhood in the community would like that. So I think we have to, again, understand what kind of precedents we may or may not be setting here. You know, we just need to be aware of that, hey, there's property out there. The housing study says we need more housing. A program or a bid will come forward. We have at that point the chance of saying, nope, we don't like this. We can say yea or nay to it at that point. And then we can talk to the neighbor, or to the neighboring property owners of this parcel and ask if they have a creative solution to this, such as they want to buy it themselves or they want to parcel it out. I think then we can get creative if there is no suitable bid for the property.
So the bid, can I read the bid posting?
Yep, yep, you can.
The bid posting says, "The parcel will sell to the highest bidder able to initiate construction of a residential dwelling within a hundred and eighty days. The bidder shall also include a plan and schedule for the development of the property, including the intended use in as much detail as possible."
Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you, mayor. I just want to mention, I was going to mention the same thing that Councilman Lampy said, is this is one of twelve playgrounds in town. So right across the street is a suitable, modern playground, some green space, it's a nice park. I mean, we have other areas in town like over by Madison School that don't have the luxury of a playground right next door, a city playground. And all are different, different sizes, different amenities and such. So yes, it would be lovely to have a big space to run and play football and do kites, but not every neighborhood is going to have that luxury. So just remember, we have twelve playgrounds and eleven parks, we have five hundred and eighty-two acres in the park system alone, so. And every acre, and we, we do this lovingly, we mow them, we care to take them, but everyone costs. It's a quality of life issue and they do cost to maintain them, so.
I would just say too, though, there's still a lot of questions on the water activity and then also the old alleyways and what is, you know, over years and years of time have gone where an alleyway disappeared, right of ways to the back of those properties. And it just seems like some of those questions are still out there in the open that haven't been answered for the property owners of that activity too, of what happened to the sale. So I just don't know if all the questions have been answered in order to even put that property up for sale.
Any other comments, real quick? Okay, so it kind of seems like it's, it's back and forth, fifty-fifty. So I guess I would entertain basically a motion to leave, to leave or remove the properties from the list.
So which is it, leave it or remove it?
Let John lead with his motion.
That's why we're going to.
So moved. To remove the property from sale.
Okay, so we have a motion by John, or Councilmember Gendrich, sorry, to, to leave the property on the list. Is there?
No, we'll take it.
I'm sorry, to remove it, I apologize. Sorry about that. All right, is there a second?
I second it.
Second by Louis. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so raise your hand, I'm sorry. Aye, 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 aye. All opposed, nay?
Nay.
Nay.
Request is approved with all ayes.
Nope.
Well, not really.
With, I'm sorry, with four ayes and three requests. This is, this is one of those weird ones, so I apologize.
Four to remove.
So I think.
Four to, four ayes, three nays.
So we will pull it off the list. I think what Councilmember Gendrich has mentioned here is probably a good idea to determine, regroup here a little bit and determine what would be the next best steps on this property. So I'll talk to staff and I'll touch base, is this your ward, John? This?
It is fifth ward.
Okay, we'll reach out to Councilmember Gendrich.
Something's satisfactory, no.
Yeah, to, to discuss that in more detail.
All right, next item is B is a discussion regarding the rescheduling of the July fourth city council meeting.
So the July fourth council meeting is a holiday. The code says that we'll hold it the day before. So the only question I had was, people are off and, off on vacation on July third too, so.
I'll be in Minneapolis.
So I didn't know if you wanted to do that, you could cancel the meeting. We could hold a meeting just to approve bills like we've done in the past. So, or you can do it another week, you could do it the last week in June if you want.
Are you talking about like a special meeting, virtual then at that point?
Yeah, we've done that too, because we really can't wait for the bills that long.
Understand.
But we could do approved bills for that. So do you have a preference and we can look at dates or?
Would everyone be okay with doing a virtual?
Virtual?
Oh, yes.
Could we do the last week of June because that is the end of our fiscal year and we do need to get those checks out and distributed.
So just the bills?
Are you talking about just the bills or like a virtual meeting that is June?
Either way. But yeah, we'd have to approve the bills.
Would everyone, would council be okay doing a virtual meeting?
Well, if we do it on the, excuse me, if we do it on June twenty-seventh, do we need to do a virtual or can't we do it in person?
We can have a regular meeting.
Or a regular meeting?
Yeah, we could have a regular meeting, but.
I have a question too. Nancy, if we do that the end of June, will they have the bills ready the end of June instead of that first week in July? That's going to make a big difference.
Whatever the deadlines are, we will, we will meet deadlines for those, yes.
So a regular meeting or?
Let me look at the calendar.
I guess a regular could be virtual.
You don't want to just have a special meeting to approve bills on Monday, July?
One?
One.
July one?
Well, no, because I'm going to be out of town that week too, you know. When I looked at the calendar, you know, and I saw July fourth council meeting, no council meeting, you know, I was.
I think the twenty, I think June twenty-seventh is probably a better choice. Let's.
I was talking about the Monday after the Fourth of July.
We'll move it to the eighth.
Just have a special meeting to approve bills.
Thursday.
If votes are available, let's just do a regular meeting, June twenty-seventh, virtual. virtually and we'll keep the business as light as possible.
June twenty-seventh?
June twenty-seventh, and we can do that meeting virtually. So, because people may be traveling or, because I know a lot of you, I know staff does do schedules, their vacation's on the fourth week, so they don't, they're here during council weeks.
Council, are you okay for a regular virtual meeting on June twenty-seventh?
Yep.
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Let's send us...
Just approving bills then at that meeting?
No, we'll have a regular meeting, but we'll try, we may have things that need to go forward, but we'll do the bare minimum.
Can we just do a...
Do we have the bills for Ju- July that we normally do on the Fourth by the twenty-seventh?
Yes.
Nancy. That's what Nancy was just saying.
All right.
Okay. Great. And...
It's completely virtual. Let's do it.
Completely virtual. It's going to be virtual.
No, that's always...
All right. Councilmember Gendrich, is there anything you'd like to share tonight?
I do. I, uh, uh, first of all, I want to, uh, remind or, you know, do something publicity-wise, whatever, to make sure we're reminding all of our senior citizens to get their MP, uh, MPW garbage discount. I don't think, uh, I think there should be an e- easy process to do that. Uh, I, uh, I also want to thank Lieutenant Reimers for his excellent instruction two Saturdays ago with the, uh, hand, or the hands-only CPR class that I took as well as the Stop the Bleed class that he taught. Myself and a few other residents were there, did a great job. Uh, so the senior citizen garbage disposal information, you know, or not garbage disposal, your garbage discount for senior citizen, that needs to be emphasized more. Uh, Lieutenant Reimers did a great job and, and I also want to pass along my sympathy to, uh, Dennis Fralick's family and, uh, you know, just say, you know, the more I say the more difficult it will be, but, uh, a lot of great conversations with Dennis Fralick over the last, uh, four years and, uh, I'll never tell anybody everything that Dennis and I talked about. Uh, but I appreciate his friendship and I appreciate his insight into city council issues as well as, uh, some life issues, so, uh, I'll miss Den- I'll miss Dennis.
That's it, Mayor, for me. Councilmember Brockert.
I echo, uh, Councilmember Gendrich's, um, comments about Dennis. He, he was one in a million and we will all miss him. The other thing is I had, uh, the privilege of writing with the, uh, EMTs on Tuesday. Went on three calls, no lights, no sirens, kind of, nah, well, whatever. But these guys are, they're rock stars. I had heard from folks that I'm acquainted with about how well they were treated by our EMTs. I got to see it in person. They, they are so kind and compassionate and caring and they try to put everyone that they're treating at ease, so my hat's off to them and I thank them very much for their hospitality, because, you know, if you get there early enough in the morning, they give you breakfast.
Sounds nice. Councilmember Conner, at this time. Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Lewis.
Um, the only thing I have is, um, actually want to write, write along as well with, um, animal control. It was kind of fun. Uh, we actually had three dogs that were running around. We actually, with the help of the police department, got them corralled and had to do a phone call up to, uh, uh, their owner who was in Wilton, so she and I stayed there with the three dogs, waiting for the owner to show up and, uh, I just want to compliment her on, um, her personal skills were excellent. She was very matter-of-fact, let them know that, you know, two of the dogs had had their rabies, the other one hadn't had the, uh, the license and, uh, she informed that, you know, she'd be back in two weeks to check on them. And, uh, then we had, um, an episode where we were down trapping cats and this little girl came out with the big tears in her eyes and was talking about that, you know, she mi- she was, she couldn't find her cat. And, uh, I saw the officer get down basically at eye level and have a conversation with this child and, um, informed mom then came out and lo and behold, a trap that was missing showed up when we came back to get the traps that were set, so we're thankful and we were actually able to relocate three raccoons as well, so that was kind of fun. But, um, excellent, she takes great pride in her job, it definitely shows it, actually went with her, was with her the whole day. She cleaned out the vehicle after she was done, making sure that the vehicle was in proper standing for the police officers that would have to maybe, uh, use it for dog, uh, dogs when she was away, so that was really great. And with that being said, uh, please remember, go to, uh, Pet Data, get your animals licensed. I have done all six of mine and have gotten mine, uh, two of them were due for their rabies and got that done and got that resubmitted, so, um, just a reminder, it is, um, important that we all have our animals licensed in the city so that in the event that we, they get out, that, uh, they can find their way home. So thank you.
Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to start just read this directly from a post and I'm s- sorry if I mispronounce the name, but the Muscatine Police Department, uh, had the honor of one of their officers, Officer Cassie Midop, Midop, uh, received the Iowa Association of Women's Police Officer of the Year Award. Uh, last year she had two lifesaving awards for the city of Muscatine, which was very, you know, sort of boosted her up there, a great candidate for this prestigious award and we're very proud of her. But I think what we need to even be more proud of, out of the last four years, we've had three female officers win this award. And so we have an outstanding PD and firefighters, but we have an outstanding PD and we have, male or female, we have great first responders, but Cassie, great job and thank you for serving the city.
Councilmember Osborne.
Uh, this Saturday at ten-thirty at the Discovery Center, if you've got four and five years old, they can be hard to entertain unless you give them worms.
No.
Uh, there will be the, uh, Muscatine County Conservation Board is hosting an event for four and five-year-olds at Discovery Park and worms will be involved. Let's go forward to that.
Like gummy worms or what are we talking?
Uh, they don't, they don't say. That would probably be a good ad.
That might be good.
Ew.
I was going to have John weigh in on the importance of worms, but he departed, so...
Not, not you, John.
Councilmember Lampy.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I too, uh, I sat, uh, in Danny Fralick's, uh, chair as first ward councilman, so it is, uh, big shoes that obviously I cannot fill and stuff, so Dennis will be missed. He will be missed as a mentor for me, um, so, uh, I was looking forward to that mentorship and it's something I will miss, so, uh, we will all miss Dennis as we go forward, so, um, yeah, enough said. That's all.
Well said. Senda.
Nothing to mention.
Minister Webb.
I actually have something. Um, so yesterday I had the pleasure of, um, attending Local Leaders Day. Um, it's hosted by the Iowa League of Cities, um, at the Capitol, state Capitol, and Councilmember Gordon, myself, Nancy Leek and Brian all attended and I wanted to say thank you to Senator Lofgren because he spent quite a bit of his day showing us around the Capitol. He showed us where he, his cubicle, that, um, you know, he was pointing out it's not that glamorous, but he loves the work that he does, um, and he took us into chambers and I just wanted to extend a thank you for him spending that time with us.
Yeah, and I would like to say, uh, yeah, Councilmember Fralick, what a guy. Um, you know, just, uh, he was also, uh, a great mentor, uh, as the vice mayor, mayor pro tem and definitely honorary sometimes for sure, um, using terms up in the craw, that type of thing, which I had no idea, but, um, anyways, definitely missed. Thoughts and prayers for Sharon, Alicia and his sons and of course, you know, with Nick Gow as well, but, uh, you know, there's a lot of big things happening in Muscatine, um, currently and then just for the future coming up, so we're just, uh, very thankful to work with great council members and administration as well to continue to get things done. And I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right.